We would like to call the work session. We'd like to call the work session to order. The first item on the agenda is a review of the fiscal budget. We're going to start with general fund, Giovanna.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for coming to this special meeting so we could go over this budget presentation. I would like to thank Tammy Keen and Brenda Stumbo for putting together this wonderful budget narratives line by line. Everything is in here. I even look at it on a daily basis to make sure that I know where things are going. This is like my bible here. So I would like to go over the general fund. We'll start with the general fund and then we'll do the fire department, environmental services, hydro, compost, motor pool, and nuisance abatement funds. If at any time you have any questions, please just ask. You're line by lines, have your narratives, the pages are numbered. So if there's anything within here that you would like to ask about now before I even start, we can go through that or we can just go ahead and go through the presentation. Okay. So we're going to start with the general fund. And I apologize for these colors up here. We're having a little bit of an issue. That's not the color of my presentation. On the presentations that I have, what we do is by classification and what is, shows you as an overview, overview basically of each of the major classifications within the fund. Our general fund is our biggest fund. This is our revenue. You can see that our revenues, our largest revenue is our state shared revenue. And you can just look at them. We've got property taxes and we have rentals and franchises. I do want to say we do have on our line by line items, we do have a decrease in our cell tower revenue. That is on, let's see what page that is. On page 10, on the line by line, and it is, the last six numbers is 667000. It says site lease revenues and that is for our cell towers. And you can see it's gone down considerably, but that's because we've had negotiations for the new easements agreements.
Can you say again what page that was?
That is on page 10. I'm looking at the line by line, not the narrative part. So page 10. And it's, it's at the, well, about a quarter of the way down. The last six numbers are 667000. And it says site lease revenues. That is the cell towers. So I just wanted to point that out since that's, that's a big drop and you may have questions on that line by line item there. Does anybody have any questions on our revenues for general fund? The next slide I have for you is, we're going to do a little bit differently. We're going to do it by department. The general fund has almost 27 different departments and each department has its own function. So I have put them in order by expenditures for each of those departments. And department for the community stabilization is our largest expense. You can see we have 1,136,000 budgeted for that. That's 13%, 13.5% of the total expenditures in the general fund belongs to that department. And that's just kind of something for you to, just like I said, just to take a look at. It's just a glimpse to see which funds or which departments have the largest expenses. Our total expenditures, budgeted, requested is 8,417,747. And then I have broken down by classification, which is on all the other presentations that we have. Classifications, our biggest expenditure is our wages, our personnel. And then following that is fringe benefits. Yes?
Hi. On page three, I just wanted to make sure I had it correct, just in case. And it is basically under residential services, parks and grounds. Does that include park maintenance or is that another category?
That does include.
Park maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you'll, you know, you'll see the departments in your line by line.
Okay.
And we'll go to, let's see, if we go to page, the narratives start on page 80.
80, okay.
So the narratives start on page 80 for the park residential. So if you have a specific question on the lines, yes, trustee Williams.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. All right. And then if we just continue down with the classifications. And these are ranked, again, in order of where they stand with the total appropriations that we're requesting for 2018. Do you have any questions on those? Our next slide is our budgeted fund balance. And again, this is the one that I find most important as an overall view of how we are budget wise. You can see our first column is, is just a description of the lines. And then the second column is our 2016 activity. That's what's on our financial statements. You've got your net revenue and expenditures. Then we have our 2017 original budget. And then we have our 2017 amended budget as of October 31st. And then we have our 2018 requested budget. And we have the beginning fund balance of 2016. You can see that's 4,108,725. We ended 2016 with 5,025,275. And if you follow that over, we have to go by our budget amounts. So we take our beginning fund balance of 2016 and then we will add what we have up the net revenue and expenditures. And that gets you to the 5,318,970. And but our amended budget, we have $2,527 that we actually approved as a budget amendment for the 2017 year. I do have that broken out for you. So we'll, we'll see what that all involves. Most of it is capital expenditures and a Tyler Dam project. But I do have that broken out, so we'll go over those.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
For the, it just says the Nexus piece, it's not budgeted because we haven't received yet. Are we like expecting that that will be next year?
No, trustee Row, we do have that.
Can you talk into the microphone? I'm sorry.
My question was about the Nexus revenues and how that's listed out.
That's this year.
We did, we did receive that. However, it wasn't budgeted and I did not do a.
Which is not budgeted, okay.
I did not do a budget amendment for it. But it's an extraordinary.
Right.
Occurrence. So that's why I put it on here because otherwise, you know, we would be at 3 million.
Okay.
Something. So if it's extraordinary, I put it in here for that reason.
And we just didn't, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think like one of the biggest difference from last year and this year is the payment of, you know, it's on page 104 in the budget. It's in Fund 999. There is 537,000, which is a debt fund that we're paying this year. So that's, and Doug and the board actually voted that when we get the dollars from the cell towers, that we would pay that off. So then that, if, if we get, that's a small word, but it has a big meaning. If we get the money, then that money would be available for the next, you know, for capital projects or.
Right, that'll change.
That's one of the biggest changes in this budget.
And I think me and Joe met like a little bit and talked about all those things.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
And then the only other thing that we did, we increased the amount of dollars we were paying for seasonal workers because we were having a hard time getting them and having them stay. So we budgeted more dollars for that. That's a.
Right. Exactly. They're just, it's very difficult to, to keep good help for that just period of time. Our equipment is very expensive, so we want to have some reliable people. And in order to do that, we need to pay them a little bit more. And we did have a longer mowing season this year. I did have to come back with a budget amendment because we, we just had a longer.
Right. Well, it was nice.
Mowing season, yeah, it was beautiful this year.
Nice, longer and.
You know, those unforeseen things happen and.
So there's no, there's not a big capital improvement. And since 2008, we didn't really have a lot of money anyways. We were in decline revenue. So at that time, the board always had each capital project come back to the board and we would vote on it instead of just budgeting it. In the past, they wouldn't budget it and not do it. So we just decided, because we really didn't have extra money anyways, that when people come, then we'll just bring, we'll take it out of fund balance and do a budget amendment at that time. And I don't know if you guys want to continue doing that? I mean. We can talk, I mean, we can do it either way. It's really hard to budget for it because if you don't do it, then it, people think it carries over to the next year and that's not what happened. So we.
And a lot of things, and I did not bring a copy of the financial statement, but I think it's on page 42 in the financial statements. I can bring those back next time and show you. There, there's a place there that we have designated funds.
For capital.
For capital.
Yeah.
So it doesn't mean that it's in solid writing. It still has to come before the board. It's just something we think, we look and we say, well, these projects, because we do have some capital improvement listings, and we say, well, these things might come up and we'll show those in our financial statements as designated. And so when they come about, then we bring them back to the board. So it's not that we don't have things listed, we just have them in a different place. They're not.
And each department has, hydro is the only one that has a huge capital improvement, 350,000, I think it was.
Yeah, we'll, and we get to that one.
When we get there, but that's, and that was, we treat, you know, that differently. But I think that park improvements, you know, there's things that we can start doing, but.
Exactly.
Bringing them back to the board and taking that each one.
Trustee Williams, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding exactly what, what you just said. So there is a designated, I guess you could say, balance area for capital improvements. At the time that a different capital improvement comes up, that money is allocated to that particular line item. Did I, am I getting that wrong or?
We don't, we don't really have it specific. We just say, we think that we might use $500,000 for roads. Are we, and that's, that's not in there.
Okay, yeah.
I'm just using that as an example. We may use it for this.
Right.
But it's still, it's not concrete and we don't really list that out.
Streetlights, playground.
Yes.
So it's separate to like a holding fund? I mean, if you want to.
It's not, it's not holding, it's just, we just say, so you can see up here on this, this is actually a great slide because we've got it at, at the end of 16, we had 54.46% of fund balance. And we'd like to keep that between 15 and 20. So that other percentage is what we're saying. We say with this, let's say 30%, here's what we need.
Okay.
Here's what we need. And it's just, it's just saying, we realize we have some fund balance there and there's things that need to be done. Doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get done this year, but these are, you know, we do have that. And that is in our financial statements. And I'll bring that copy next, next presentation so that you can see that.
Okay. It makes sense now, thank you.
Yeah.
So if you have, you know, 15 to 20% is normally the recommended fund balance.
Exactly.
And we have 53%. So in the audit, we allocate it. And thank God we had it through the hard times because we were able to do investments in infrastructure and can, you know, keep the buildings up and whatnot.
Right. Okay, so let's go on. So we have our budget overview for our expenditures. And basically what they did on this was the capital outlay. And so we did have this decrease from 2,143,606 in 2017 to a budget request of 257,550. All right. And I just listed what we expect for those, that 257,550 capital improvement to the buildings. I think that had some building stuff with it and some landscaping.
Edrin's Drive, right?
Yeah.
With that part, we finish that out.
And then 50,000 to replace some office furniture. Our office furniture is getting really old and falling apart sometimes. Then we got 40,000 budgeted for cellular, cellular repeater. Our IT department needs some, some stuff to keep us, to keep us going.
When you have a cellphone in our building, we can't get out. So in order to have, but it's 40,000.
Right. And then, and then you can see the breakdown of the other things that we have on here. And any, any of the capital projects, including these, all have to come back before the board to get bidding and approval from the board. So I just want to make that very clear. The debt obligation, as we were talking about before, we have a debt obligation. It's our Seaver Farm bonds. The principal on that, the principal interest payment that's due this year is $537,000. I do have that budgeted to move from the general fund to that bond fund. However, if we get the cell tower funds, that'll all change. And I'll bring that back to the board as a budget amendment so that we can make sure that the proper funds are hit with that. And so we won't need to take that money out of the general fund prior to your fund balance.
And that's the last payment.
Over 537?
That will be, yes.
So the 537, there would be one more.
There's the, there's the next note. The note at the bottom, we owe $720,000 in principal. And I'm, the interest will be roughly about 20,600. There might be some fees involved with closing that bond out a little bit earlier. So I believe with the cell phone tower funds would be 740,000.
740.
So I think that'll be enough to cover all of that. You know, when, when the time comes, again, I'll bring that back before you so that you know exactly where we're standing and what needs to be paid off for that. And we do have a debt obligation that, from the general fund, that we pay 50% of the road bond. So we move 50% of that over to the BSR II fund, which is where we pay that road bond So is there any questions on the debt obligations that we have coming out of the general fund this year or requested? And then I put together real quickly because we did do so much funds in budget amendment and you look at that 2,527, that's quite a jump. And so what I have is, I have just a listing of all that we have approved.
Thank you. That's, I love that.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's good to see it.
You like forget what, you know, happens.
It helps, yeah.
Yeah, because I know it's all approved, it's all brought before you, but to, you know, it's nice to see it all in one spot. So did you want me to go each line item? Are you guys okay with those? We have a second page. And again, the Tyler Dam project is, is our biggest project for 2017. And I just put this one in for you. This is just our fund balances from 2011 through 2016. You can see our beginning and our ending fund balance through those. Those are our active years and they are finished. I just thought that would be just something so that you could see. We do have a fund that I've never really brought before the board because nothing ever happens with this fund. This fund was, it's a state grant fund. It's Fund 280 in our, in our records. It was established back in 1997. It has not been used since 2008. What they had used this for was all the grant monies that we would receive would go into there and then we would pay them out. Now we just put the grant into the fund that has requested it and we track it from there in separate line items. So I'm asking permission to bring before the board, this will be a budget amendment that I'll bring back in December. I would like to just close this fund out. I would like to just put the 18,503 into the general fund and just close that out. In the financial statements, we already combined that with the general fund. So, and I will bring that back. I just kind of wanted to explain that to you.
So what's interesting is that you can't create or eliminate line items without bringing it back to the board.
I mean, which is good.
Yes. A pain, right. But it's good.
I just have one. Joe, this is different than the other fund. There's one other fund that like we never, ever used that you were, or is this the same one that I'm thinking about?
This is, yeah, there were, there were actually, that's a good question. There was the 225 fund, which is the environmental cleanup fund. And I've already asked your permission for that one and I think you've given me that one.
Is there one more, two?
No, there was just the two. And those have been combined for several years in our financial statements because they don't, they don't have any actually funds coming into them. They just are there, sitting. So there's no need to have them. If, if there's not a reason for the fund, then they should be just combined in with the general fund then. Okay, we, we now will start with our, our fire fund balance. I have Chief Copeland here with me. So if you have any questions, he's going to help me answer them because he's got it all down. And again, we have your line by line items. You can take a look through those. All the descriptions, all the narratives are right there for you. Again, what I have is just an overview, the classification overview. This is our revenues. I do have the millage up there of the mills for that fund that we have for 2018. And again, I have the one for pension and the one for the operations, the first and second lines there. So do we have any questions on the revenues? It's kind of all taxes. Our expenditures, I have them by classification, just to kind of give you, again, it's an overview. Our biggest expenditure is our personnel, it's our wages, and then of course our fringe benefits. Actually, the fringe benefits for the pension, which is the pension and the OPEB. That's the second line item. So you have your regular wages and then you have the pension and OPEB combined in the second line.
Are we expecting any like significant changes? I know you guys are close with the negotiations, but like hopefully nothing with that will significantly change this?
Well, we don't have any.
Increase.
There is no increases on anybody's because the firefighters' contract was up at the end of 2016. And we have the Ask Me and the Team Service Union, their contracts are up in 2017. So for 18, as I stated in our first one, we have no wages budgeted. So there will be changes to this when the contracts.
Or ratified, or like once the firefighters complete their contract.
Yeah, if, if there is any changes that will be made. And again, that'll have to be brought back.
Sure.
As a budget amendment so that everybody knows.
Do you guys anticipate that?
The summer fifth.
Yeah, the summer fifth, we should have a presentation.
Okay, good. Hopefully I'll be here with the baby or not. We'll see.
Oh.
I'll be a day over.
That's exciting. A baby for Christmas.
Yeah, Larry's going to hold the baby during the meeting, so.
Okay, but, but really no, no other major changes through here? Is that correct? Do we have any major changes?
No, no major changes.
And then I just have a second page of the classification expenditures. Does anyone have any questions on the line by line items? And then we have our fund balance page. And this is kind of an overview of where we're standing right now with our ending fund balance and what percentage of the revenues that fund balance is. You can see this is, it's, it's getting, it's getting pretty low.
What is your target for that, Joe? Like what do you like to see that fund balance?
15, 15 to 20, anywhere between there. And this is definitely pretty low. So, yes, trustee Williams?
It's too low.
I guess my, my question is, how does the fund balance get increased? Is that by basically increase in revenues, which would mean increasing the millage for fire?
That is correct. Because that's all they have. They have no standalone revenues coming in other than you have fire inspections. That, that wouldn't amount to any significant change at all.
Okay. And you, and you said the recommended fund balance is between?
15 and 20. I, I like to see it between 15 and 20.
All right. Thank you.
This is, this has our lowest fund balance.
Yes.
Well, and the township actually paid for the fire truck and they're paying us back. So there's no dollars for capital improvement. And that's what we really need.
Yeah, and we're in need of some new fire trucks and.
We need another millage.
Roof and.
That's what we.
It is, especially after.
Yeah.
The one we didn't. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. And that's the question, I guess, I wanted to ask Chief Copeland, is that seeing that the, you know, fund balance will be going to, at least for the amended and also original, 8.89 and 8.30, do you anticipate or would you think that possibly a millage would be needed in order to increase the balance?
Yes, I do. I think at our December meeting, we will outline a plan to address the maintenance issues as well as the funding issues.
We have a pretty comprehensive proposal that will be under some of the fifth that should at least, I think, address a lot of the issues that you're identifying even this evening. And I think that putting it all together and hopefully it'll be a clear picture at that meeting.
Then the, the next page that I have though is a capital outlay that we're requesting for 2018. And then we just have the description of each one of those that are needed. And you can see we need a new roof at, at the Hewitt Road Station. Some bathroom tiles need to be replaced at the headquarters. Concrete work, the beginning of the concrete work for the parking lot at the headquarters, that's going to be, do you think, how much is that going to be?
The estimate, the low side, I think it's about 300,000 up to 400,000. This is the original parking structure or parking material that was, I think from 91 or 94 when that station was built. It's been about 25 years. And we're opting for a total replacement. There was a three-part plan, kind of a piecemeal operation and then to do parts partial. But this project that we're looking at is a complete tear out and reinstall.
Right.
Yeah. So that.
It's the original, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's much needed now. If we take a look. We have been working with OHM in getting together a plan to do this, a three, three-step plan. There's also been some modifications, some green spaces that we're going to add to try to curtail some of the costs of this. But it is much needed. I don't know if you've been to our station and seen, not only the parking lot, but the curb and gutters, you know. And the, yes.
Okay, and then we just have them listed, listed right down through there. And then they are paying the motor pool back for the fire truck at 59,520 each year over the next 10 years. That started in 2016. So I think that completes the fire department fund. Oh no, I've got another page here, so sorry. Just what we had done previous in this year so far, the budget amendments, the budget amendments for this year. And you can see at the bottom is, is the biggest. And you can see at the bottom is, is the biggest prior year fund balance. And that was actually budgeted because there was a shortage in 2017, you know, to balance the balance of budget, so we had to actually pull from prior year fund balance. And that concludes the fire department, the fire fund. Any questions?
I was just noticing, I was thinking, this grant here that we have this year was for like AED machines or something, right? Is that, is there any hopes to maybe get some? I see that you have like $5,000 listed for emergency rescue equipment. Do you know if grants are out there for those sorts of items? I mean, I know that's a huge what-if, but...
Yeah, we haven't signed on countywide. We, we do a collaboration countywide for any, you might say EMS equipment. We've gotten our air packs and our turnout gear, we, we're taking in the hose, we've gotten new fire hose. And right now, the pressing issue is for us to replace our, our trucks to kinda curtail some of our, our maintenance costs that are very high. Yeah.
I, I think, tell me if you, if I'm correct, but the regional fire department has really helped with getting more boots on the ground from different departments and, you know, it's good for the firefighters, it's good for the property that is burning and to save lives, but it does put a lot of wear and tear on your vehicle, because you're driving and responding more than you would if you were just in your community.
Correct, there is an, an upsurge, you might say, in the mileage on our trucks, but it is reciprocal in terms of getting adequate boots on the ground, as you say, in terms of when we have a structured fire type event. But it's, if you notice, we've been doing automatic mutual aid now with most of our neighbors. And that was, if I recall, that was one of the four assignments that I was given when I came here to affect that change. And it has expanded from the city to Superior, Van Buren, and Pittsfield. And we've had some discussions into trying to do something with Ann Arbor. But I think there's another wave of departments that should probably take the lead on that, because that would extend our, our mileage, you might say, to, to travel into Ann Arbor. So, this, the collaboration though, I think from the auto aid, we, we spun off into this grant initiative, which has been helpful for us in securing a lot of needed equipment upgrades, namely the turnout gear, the SCBA. And we are all utilizing the same type of gear and type of SCBA regionally. So, it's, it's, there's some other initiatives on the, on the, on the horizon. One of them I can, can share with you is that I was approached recently about doing a, a maintenance, a vehicle maintenance type regional program. And because our station on Ford Boulevard has, you might say, the truck lifts and some other...
Do they have the lifts there?
Yes, so it's, it was just floating the idea about us doing a regional maintenance, vehicle maintenance, and by us having some of the older trucks that because of our maintenance issues I didn't send out to pasture.
Right.
It may allow us the opportunity to use, utilize those trucks as we bring in trucks to repair. So, I'm just exploring this idea a little more because it seems like it could bear a lot of fruit. It could be a, a help to solve some of our maintenance issues and, and fund some of the...
And it's usually single source, right?
Yes.
Right, so you have no, can't go to just Ed's mechanic right next door, you can't go there, you have to go to the...
To Freightliner.
And they're the only ones, yeah. So, that, that's interesting.
So, this has come, come about as, as we collaborate with the other fire departments and it's, the landscape has changed. A while ago, you know, it wasn't a lot of dialogue, a lot of conversation, but now there is.
Thanks for your leadership, I mean, Chief. Okay, Chief, we're good. And we'll move on to environmental services.
Next.
We do think.
Next.
Jeff Allen, our residential director, come down. He's here.
I also help with this, because Jeff was out for a while. Did you get my email?
All right, so we'll, we'll start environmental services fund. And we'll start off with our revenues. This is one that actually has a millage as well. This covers all of our waste management, rubbish pickup, recycle pickups. And this is by classification again, just so you can see where the funds are from on this, and it is our taxes. Then we have the expenditure classifications. The biggest expense on this one is actually the contractual agreements that we have with waste management for the rubbish pickup, the recycling pickup, roll-offs. Does include admin fee back to the general fund for all the services provided for them and also yard waste pickup. Then our second biggest one is our personnel, which are wages. And then on down. But 71% of the expenditures, the total expenditures are for the contractual that we have basically with waste management is the biggest one. So, did anybody have any questions on the line by line budget, the narrative line by line for... Yes, Trustee Williams?
Thank you. I was just curious, and the waste management agreement, how long is it? And this is gonna, and this, and this cost will stay steady, correct?
No, they go up 2.25% a year. And it is a contract into 2020. We are covered through 2019, so 2020, we would have a new contract or bidding or what have you. I can, I can add that those are, I, I'll give you numbers if you'd like. The trash we pay, currently, we're paying $659 a resident per month. In 2018, that'll go $674, so it goes up 15 cents, which is 2.25%. Yard waste, we're currently paying $199, it goes to $203. And recycling, we pay $193 and it's going to $197. So, those are the costs.
That is on, in the line item two, Monica? It's detailed out too.
If anyone has any questions. Okay, and we've really not added anything new into this, this fund. This is our overall look at the fund balance. Again, we can, we can see where our fund balance is as of budgeted for 2018, if things stay the way they are for the budget. And it's at 30, it ends up at 39, 39.31%. So, again, it's a healthy, a healthy fund. We, we do need to pull from the fund balance, prior year fund balance to balance.
Operating.
The operating for the year.
Which we knew when we do the millage, we knew that would be...
Yes. Yeah, so you can see on this next page, I do have, for 17, we had to pull $147,604. And then in 18, the 208,223 was needed to, to balance for the operations. So, we did have to go into that. We don't have any major capital outlays looking forward for this fund. If we do, they'll be brought before the board.
I just have one question, it might be going back a little bit, and then looking at the actual line by line, for the current type of recycling.
Do you have a page number or an account number?
It is 133. That was my question, right? The number is 226, 2260008003. And it was just, and it talks about the line item covers the, the fee per ton. Oh, thank you, I'm so sorry. Did you hear any of that?
Can you give me the last six numbers?
The last six numbers are 804008.
It's for me anyways.
008, nobody has?
Yeah, it's my question, I'm sorry.
So, I'll be going through the detail.
Because there's no, there's no charges on it.
And then again, it's 133 is the page I'm on, if, if they're the same numbers for you guys. And it just talks about, so this line item covers the per-ton fee paid or received from materials hauled from residents to the recycle center. This amount is dependent on the market for recyclables and the projections are not good for 2018, therefore it has been increased to $95,000. I just didn't, I, what does that, what does not good mean?
The, in general, the, the recycling market is not lucrative. Lucrative's not the right word, but it actually costs less to get rid of trash and it costs to get rid of recycling. This year so far, we've, I think we've, we've gained some in that the amount of materials that we, they've, they've limited the amount of, they've cut the cost of what we were paying on an invoice instead of billing it separates. Waste management changed their billing a little bit, that they used to bill it, this is your recycling disposal. And then more recently, they've not done it that way and they've just reduced the amount, they've put it on the same invoice, so we've got a credit on an invoice that we were being billed for. So, I, if you look in there, it doesn't really show that necessarily. But I'm not sure that that's, I do want them to bill that separate, and I'm gonna ask them to do that for 2018, so that we have an actual cost of getting rid of recycling material as opposed to missing that on, on the invoice and then it just being credited back.
It's kind of a move, Brendan and I attended a meeting and then I know there's a bunch coming up. It's kind of a move, I guess there's a really good, efficient, more operating recycle regional collaborative on the west side, and I think it's like Chelsea, you know, it's like three or four smaller communities, but I guess it's doing really well. And so, they're looking at possibly, if anybody wants to come, I can send you information on, because I'm having a bunch of tours, they're looking at, maybe trying to look at an approach comparable to AAAT where the whole county, people who wanna be a part of that, because we all are dealing with that, and I guess Ann Arbor, who is very successful, isn't running their site anymore, and so they're...
They're going to Ohio.
They're going to Ohio, and so, yeah, so there's a huge research, search, data collection and thought process going through to see what we as a county might be able to do and whether we would enter into that same kind of collaborative, but only larger, that's actually extremely successful, successful on the west side. So, is it's, what everybody's doing right now is not working and we're all just piecemeeling and we're like just hoping, you know, and that if you, and plus you get better pricing if you can have a, a stream that is always solid of whatever.
Right.
So, anyways, I know that's going.
And along those same lines, I, I think we had an inquiry from maybe Kirk Profit or somebody at the state level, asking about the viability of grants, because the state comes out with grants for recycling. And to me, and my response to him, that I wrote him was, that they, what they really need to do is give grants to people who have the ideas of what to do with the material at the end. Until there's a market at the end to, you know, make something out of that material, that's where the grant money needs to go. And all of a sudden, then that'll start driving, if you, if you can start driving that market, and then all of a sudden someone says, "Oh, I need this material because we can now make cars out of it," or whatever the case may be. That, to me, that's where the, where you really need to drive it.
I couldn't concur more, and one of the things Brendan and I found out there was that, good for the world, bad for the US, but China now is actually recycling their plastics, or they're gonna take them from their own country where they used to buy them from us for different products. And so, basically, that source to sell to is gone and no, and people across the nation are freaking out because we all have so many plastic bottles.
And bags.
And bags, and what they're gonna do with that, because China, and it's soon, I wanna say like next year, that market is gone because China said, "No, we don't need yours." We're now, they're enforcing their own recycling laws, which is great, but the rest of, so that feeds right into what you said, that I need for end users of the products to make whatever they make.
Again, ovation, creative ways to use it.
So, I agree with Jeff, I'm pushing that from the state level.
Thank you for explaining that.
Any other questions? We do have the hydro, whoops, we do have the hydro fund next.
Dam's Mike, Dam Mike is here too in the back, if you...
No, he's not.
Oh, he left.
Michael.
He's out there.
Yes, Michael's here, so if we have any questions specifically for him, he can, he can answer all the stuff about, about the generators and the running of that dam.
I have a question about the generators.
Yes, Trustee Row.
I know that, yes, two weeks ago, it's on, it's on, I promise, I'm gonna leave it on. You said that the, is your generator out now? Is that, no, is it, I thought something was going out.
Well, we had a, there was a breakdown a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And we got that back in a minute.
Okay.
Just give your name for the record.
There it is, sorry about that, mine was off.
That was my only question, I was just curious.
Any questions?
Um, I do have a, a question. It may not hit directly on the 2018 budget, but it's just a general question in regards to how it will affect our dam. So, if I am hearing talk that Ypsilanti may close their dam or Beria and eliminate it, so, right, so how would that affect us? Because the, you know, the flow comes downstream, so, I mean, it could be, you know, I, I don't see any way that it's not gonna affect us, or will it not affect us?
No, I don't see any changes at all.
Okay.
So, if they did remove that dam, they would have to deal with sediment, all that is part of their project, so I don't see anything really transporting down river into Ford Lake.
Okay, okay, that's good to hear.
I think, though, Michael, would there be more flow?
Nope, it'd be the same flow.
No difference.
No difference at all.
Quicker flow?
Nope. The, the great change from...
Wonder why you have the dam?
They had it for power production years ago and it's been discontinued for 30-some years or more, so it's just still been there.
Did Henry Ford build it?
No, I think it was a pen, a paper company that built that one.
Okay. There are a lot of, there's like five residents from YPSY Township, I think, or four that live, and they're very concerned about, you know, having water going down to no water, because that's what it would do.
Right, and they actually reached out to me, asking a lot of questions, and I shared what I could, but I said, "At the end of the day, it comes down to safety." So, regardless of this power generation or not, you know, the, the safety is most, most important, so either fix it or remove it or repower it, and the day is, it's about safety.
It's a city of Ypsilanti dam and we have no dam control over.
We have no control, right.
My point, right, that's what I'm saying.
They were trying to suck us.
Okay, so our revenues...
They don't own that one.
Our revenues on this, we get from the cell of the electricity to DTE. And our expenditures?
This is that big expenditure.
Yeah, the, the generators are the big ones. And, and we do have some, we had the Tyler Dam in here at first into this fund, so there were some, a little bit of fees in there, but most of it is the generators. This fund can only use the revenues that are generated from the dam, hydro dam, to, to the hydro area. So, the Tyler Dam could not use any of those funds. not use any of those funds. That's why the general fund had to send money over to the hydro at first. Now we've pushed the Tyler Dam project into the general fund because the hydro could not use any of their revenues for that maintenance or repair or tearing it down of that Tyler Dam.
And that's because we have an agreement, settlement when they sold or what used to be Gyro Park.
Joint Ypsilanti Recreation.
Between the city and the township. And the agreement was, whatever they worked out as that, um, revenues over expenditures on the dam have to be split.
Ten percent.
Uh, it's a certain percentage has to go to City of Ypsilanti. So in order to document that, only those funds and expenditures and bills can be charged to that.
Exactly. And that's the 10%. Yeah, you're right. Yep. And that's the, um, third line down, um, on the expenditures. You'll see there's 10% of the city of Ypsilanti and then some for study. So it's kind of. And you do have it line by line in your, would you like me to give you the line number? Are you okay? Okay. All right.
Hey, Joe.
Yes.
Just for clarification, uh, we put in the narrative that was 10% of the gross of DTE revenue?
That is correct. We can, we do that, um, if, there's a calculation in there. So we have to have more expenditures than the revenue. Um, is that, is it more?
Doug knows.
Yeah, it's like in 1988. I know that.
Right. So what I do is I have to calculate all of the expenditures for the year that are used within the hydro. And that can be to shore the, um, how do you shore the
And Ford Lake Park, right?
Yeah, Ford Lake Park. We did some shore stuff. What do you do to shore?
Erosion control?
Yes, erosion control. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. What you're saying is that, you know, there, there are, there's a calculation formula that takes into account our expenditures and then they get a percentage of that. So I don't know. As years go by, I'm not sure exactly how the, if the revenues are increasing to the point where it exceeds the expenditures. I'm not really sure exactly how that's played out over the years. But it's a 50, it's a 50-year agreement. So it will come.
Right. And we always have enough expenditures that we only have to pay the city 10%.
So my question was perhaps my line
It is the gross. It's the gross. Because it's the electricity that the, that it generates. So that's the, the gross electricity.
It's gross of the electricity minus operations though, of the Ford Lake Park and
No, we'd have to pay them, we would have to pay them more if we did not spend expenditures. We'd have to pay them on top of the 10%.
So even if we lost money, we'd still have to pay them 10%.
Exactly.
Okay. So, sorry. Doug knows it very well.
We've, we've not, since I've been here, I mean, I'd have to go back and look, but I don't think we've ever had to pay them more than the 10% of the electricity. Because we, uh, the auditors need to actually confirm that we have enough expenditures
Correct.
that match up with those revenues. And if they do, and then they're, then we only have to pay them 10% of what the electricity is that we earn. Just strange.
Yeah, that's correct. And I agree with that.
Okay.
So just to clarify, um, in this, okay, so the 10% is basically paid off of the energy revenues that is generated?
Hydroelectric.
Okay. And it would not go over 10%, right? But even if the revenues was less, then would be liable for that 10%? We are still obligated to pay them 10%?
No, it's just, it's, it's always going to be 10% of the gross, the electric. So that's on that line. That's the line that's six, four, one.
Page 145.
So you answered your question, Jeff. Even if we lose money, we still got to pay them 10%.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question.
Right. So yeah, if our expenditures are more, if our expenditures are more than the revenues, you're still going to pay them that, the 10%.
And that is over the next 50 years?
Well, actually, just for clarification, that, back in 1980, in 1980, there was a lawsuit of a gyro park. And that was a park that was owned, it's now the Ford Lake Park. And the city owned 50% of that park as well as the dam. And as a result of that lawsuit that the city filed at the time, the township got total control of the park as well as total control of the dam. And they were going to get paid this 10% for 50 years. And this is like year 29 or close to it, 30. So I didn't think I'd be sitting here talking about a year 29, 30.
We're almost here.
And I didn't think, but there was a significant, um, it's not, just the, the city got all the park land and they got total control over how to use the Ford Lake Park. They had that under our control as well as the Ford Lake Dam as well. And then the gyro board
We don't see we do. We gave them property over off, here on
There was, there was, there was, there was some, uh, land swap. We got some property over here off of, uh,
Where your mother-in-law lives.
Over there on, he's his property, but by he's his campus and
Stadium? On Hewitt. Right? Is that Hewitt? Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. It's by Dale Leclerc's property. It's where they built the apartment.
West side of Hewitt, the parking lot there, used to be the township.
Couple of islands over there.
When I worked at Eastern, yeah.
Just ask Rain Man, you know, which we appreciate your historical knowledge.
Okay. The, the request for this fund is for staffing, some additional staffing. Like to request additional part-time personnel. Uh, it is budgeted. Um, it was budgeted actually for 2017, but we did not hire anyone. So we would like to keep that in 18 and, and actually try to hire someone in 18. That would be the two, um, part-time personnel that, that Michael would have to assist him with that thing. And the capital improvement plan for the hydro is work on this gen two. And you can better explain that.
Yeah. The capital improvement plan for the large generator would replace the lower turbine shaft bushing. So if we continue to run with that, at some point, uh, it'll start, the turbine runner will start hitting the draft tube, which will end up pretty much destroy the runner over time. So by putting these bearings in, uh, it will save that, uh, expenditure and outage. This particular bearing has a lifespan of about 10 years and this one's in there in service now for 12. So it's time to get that one out.
Barriers cost $300,000?
It's the tear down. Not so much the bearing, but it's the tear down. So also part of this project, I'm actually going, looking, going back to the manufacturer and finding out what bearing design they had in the 1930s. And I have a gut feeling we may be going back to that same design where it had a, what they call a pillow block, where you can adjust it right there, um, during regular routine maintenance. And, uh, you can replace them while they're, while it's there, while it's dewatered and not have to tear it down. At some point over the years, it was replaced to a, um, maintenance-free design where you couldn't adjust it. So it would, the bearing would wear, then it would wear on the shaft, and then you have to rebuild the shaft and all that stuff. So that's where I'm going to look at next year is to find out what we can do to stop having to replace this bearing or complete overall. The new design is what's wearing out faster. We don't know why they changed them out. And I don't, I had to find that, answer that question in my head. So.
Is that guy still around?
The company, um, James Luffel Company is in Ohio and they are still there. And, and from the conversations I've had, they actually still have the design drawings. So we could, he could basically just walk it over to their fab shop and make that bearing from the 1930s. So, um, yeah. So that, that's kind of interesting and it does save money from returning reverse engineering something. But at the same time, we got to ask that question, why did they change it out?
Is that other guy still around or still around?
Cameron?
The guy that was here before that was here for
Oh, uh, you talking about Cameron Gas Electric?
Operator who was here before you.
Your part-time
Oh, that was, um, Dwayne Bolin. That, that's who I took over. The Bob Eckhart guy, he retired with me. He came in after I did. So he was just part-time weekends. So.
She's talking about the gentleman that never cashed his check.
Oh, Bob Mannion.
Yes.
Oh, okay. No, he passed away.
He was like the damn man in the back.
Right. Yeah, yeah. He passed away. Yeah. I, it's been probably, yeah. So.
When did they switch over to that new, the new?
I truly don't have a clue. I'm going to guess in the eighties, when they were trying to get that place up and running. That would be the best guess.
And, um, Doug, maybe you can talk more, but I know that, that we have about $800,000 in a fund, that we have to set aside Detroit Edison. The agreement required us to set aside so many, uh, a certain percentage every year. And so we have like 800,000, right? And Doug has tried to reach out to them to get them to pay us half of it so we can use it towards fixing it. And we have not been successful.
I was just looking at, the agreement was dated December 6th, 1989. So I just wanted to be affirmed by the, the agreement. Uh, what's kind of also a separate but parallel issue is 1992, whatever it was, uh, the federal government requires, uh, utility companies like Detroit Edison to purchase power. Michael, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but it's called PURPA.
Correct.
And that's the acronym that requires, uh, utility companies to purchase renewable energy. It's not that so much that Detroit Edison wanted to buy it from us, they were forced to, to, and the purpa, and the idea was to sort of limit the number of other power-producing plants. And, uh, we forced utility companies to purchase renewable energy. And of course it says, the negotiations with them back then were very, very difficult. And at the time, they were insisting because our plant was not in the best, uh, such, it was not in the best operating condition at the time. Going back to Bob Mannion, trying to keep things, um, running smoothly. They required us to set aside a nickel per kilowatt. Uh, that was not to be, there was, that was not to be used for repairs or maintenance. That was to only be a fund, that in the event the township breached its obligations to produce power, Detroit Edison would have a source of funds they could lay claim to for liquidated damages.
Correct. Yeah.
And so during the course of that, that, uh, another 25 years, we have now amassed, and, and the city, the city of Ypsilanti has no claim on these funds. These are all township funds. We've amassed a total of $800,000 or close to it. And I think Giovanna discovered, uh, last year that the interest we're getting on this money is absolutely practically nothing. It's like a hundred and fifty dollars a month, $200 a month from the bank. Detroit Edison is designated as the astroagent. So myself and Larry especially have been trying to get Detroit Edison to release, and these dollars will be released to the township, uh, starting in two years, I believe.
Yeah, January of 20, or 19, 2019.
We'll start getting a release of those funds of 10% a year for
10 years.
10 years. I think it's 10 years. And, uh, so we'll get the money. Right. It's, it's our money. So it's not a question of whether or not we're going to get it. But we would like to get it actually sooner than later because during the last 25 years, uh, we've gone back and done the research, we have put in 2.7 million dollars into the dam, of which about 65% of that has come from the general fund. And so we'd like to take the 50, we'd like to ask the dam to release $500,000 because it's our money. It cannot be used for repairs by, even by Michael, if he wanted to, to do something. But we could put it back in a general fund. And then from there, we could actually then, uh, fund those repairs. So far, we've not got anywhere with them and trying to have them release our own money. In the meantime, it continues to earn, what, less than 1% interest a month in terms of the dollars and everything.
That is true.
And so, uh, there is, there is money that will be coming into the township, starting in 2019, uh, probably $80,000 a year roughly for the next 10 years. But we could think we could do something with that money right now. And quite frankly, there's no good reason why they shouldn't release that money because again, it was only designed to show that if the event, we breached our contract, they'd have a source of liquidated damages. In the event, they had to go out and buy, uh, electricity from another party to fulfill their contracts. They haven't, they've never had to do that. We've always met our milestones in regards to producing electricity.
Yeah, there was one exception, but
There was one exception, but
Yeah, that was
No, there was a minor one, Mike.
That was Mother Nature.
Yeah, there was a, there was a drought or something or not. But anyways, um, that's the story behind the $800,000. And we have discussed that and we're going to continue to try and set up meetings to get those dollars released because now we could use those funds to, again, keep a healthy fund balance. Is that?
And yeah, yes, that's it. And as you can see on this one, the fund balance, the budget of fund balance, you can see it goes from 55% funded to 8.1% funded in 2018 after we do that big gen two project. So it didn't have a whole lot of capital. I mean, a fund balance in it, but when you use it for a big project like that, it's going to, it's going to make it go down. So it would be nice if we could get those funds, you know, in case anything else happens that, that we need to fix.
Well, I think we decided we're going to make, uh, we're going to outreach, make another effort to reach out to Kirk Profit and myself and Larry to try and schedule these meetings because so far they're not going, you know, in the way they should be going, given the facts of what I, what I just said is all true. It's not something that they have any claim on. And, uh, no more money is going into that fund anyways. In other words, they've, if you're capped out, so there's no more kilowatt money going into that. We're so far into the contract that we'll be looking for a new, perhaps a new contract here in the next five years.
Yeah, I figured we probably need to approach them around 2024 to start talking about that.
Do we have any more questions?
Nope.
Any other? All right. Thank you, Michael.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we got motor pool and nuisance abatement left. So our motor pool fund is our inner, um, oh, I'm sorry. Did I pass right over that? I'm so sorry. I don't
Why, can we just do the motor pool?
Yeah, we can. Just do what's in order, if you want. We can go back.
Just go back.
I don't
I'm over to the after motor pool.
Okay, we'll do motor pool. Okay. Our motor pool fund, um, is where all the vehicles are stored and purchased here. Um, each of the departments pay back a lease to the motor pool. Um, they pay back the fuel. So the fuel is purchased from this area and you get, the other funds have to reimburse them back. So this is like a, it's, it's truly a motor pool fund. So you can see the revenues that we get are from leases and the fuel. And that's back from each and one of the funds and departments that use those vehicles are leases. And Jeff and I go through this list of our vehicles. Uh, we charge, um, each of the departments that use the vehicle, we charge them a, an annual fee that we break up, um, on a monthly basis. Do we have any questions on that? It's, it's a fairly simple fund.
Are there any questions?
Largest expense is the depreciation of the capital assets.
Giovanna, you said this is, uh, you just said this is, uh,
Yes, trustee Rowe.
Basically just the depreciation.
It's an inter-service fund is what it's considered. And, and all the funds use it. It's, um, it's not an enterprise fund that makes money. It, you lease it and, and it's just a one section where we can control our vehicles.
Gotcha.
So our maintenance, the fuel on them, the vehicles themselves, and then each one of the departments that use that vehicle will pay us back.
Gotcha.
And then once the vehicle, uh, cause we do have a fleet, we've, we've really updated our fleet. Um, and once that vehicle is paid off completely, then each of the departments will have to continuing maintenance back to the motor pool fund. You know, it's considerably less. So when we look at that each year, we decide, you know, if they're still new, and of course they're going to pay for the vehicle, we just push that out, just like you would on a regular capital asset. We do that over a five to seven year period. And then after that, then it's just a maintenance. So we have some that are paid off completely. They still pay, um, an annual maintenance fee back to the motor pool for.
And it's budgeted in each department. So each department has vehicles, has an amount. And it's budgeted in each department, so each department has vehicles, has an amount that they pay. Or just, and then there's enough money to buy new vehicles.
Correct.
It used to be that we always just had to borrow from, or use the funds to buy them. And Williamson, our prior CPA, came up with this idea, and it's worked really, really well to, you know, not hit the budget. It doesn't, you know, and it's just like, it's kind of like saving at home for your next, you know, even though you have a car and it's paid off, you just keep, you know, saving the money that you put in. Each department puts in there to support it, so.
Exactly, and we do have some wages and fringe benefits in here. We do have, one of the clerical staff actually, you know, kind of tracks all of this for us.
Yes, trustee.
Thank you, quick question. You put in, I guess this is page 39, about the motor pool fund revenue review, that the fuel assumptions are lower for 2018. So I know that fuel has just increased probably within the last two weeks about 25, 30%, so. Was that assumption probably made before that?
Yes, it was.
Okay, okay. And then I think I said percent, and I meant 25, 30 cents, sorry.
Again, those are our best assumptions at the time when we do them. It has been lower for the last couple of years, so.
Right, we've, we've estimated, I think a couple of years ago, I was doing $4, that was our budget, a gallon. And actually, what happens is if we have to pay, we, we charge back, so. And we add 25 cents a gallon to what we charge back. So if we have to pay $2.50 for a gallon, we're charging the department back 2.75 to pay some of that administrative fee of tracking it. So it, we'll wind up with more revenues. So if we go higher in expenses, we'll have to do a budget amendment to pay the expenses, but we've got the revenues in the revenue account as well, so.
So year-to-date, we've spent $25,000. So they thought they were safe with $41,000, but like you said, you never know. I was shocked when it went up. So maybe we should change, we can change that line item, make it clear, or...
Yeah, we might want to look at that.
Just based on the amount used.
Right, probably market.
We'll budget the same, because we're at $25,000, you know, we're in November, and $41,000 is budgeted, so I think it...
I think we'll be all right.
I do too.
But again, if we need to, what we would do on those situations is we would come in and ask for a budget amendment to increase the expenditure, and we'd also ask to increase the revenue. So it really wouldn't be hitting any prior year fund balance. You would increase that revenue because we do get that reimbursed back. Where it would, where it would come in hard is on each of the departments because we've already got those budgeted in their expenditures to pay us back, so.
Definitely, let's hope gas doesn't hit $4 a gallon, for sure.
All right, and then our fund balance page, you can see where we were at in 2016 and where we're...
Let's change that line item, that description, just to... Thank you, Michael.
All right, sorry, now we have our compost, sorry, I had them a little out of order.
Compost.
Our compost department, our compost fund is actually an enterprise fund. It is, does make money. So we do have to count that as a money-making fund. Does anybody have any questions as far as where that goes? And we do have service charges that we have for any drop-offs. If anybody's been there, if you live in the township, I'm sure everybody has used it, and there's actually some good dirt there that we can get, we can drop off. Soil, dirt. If you want to elaborate on any of the revenues that we get.
I will just add that Carl's had fun the last year driving the windrow turner out there. But he's, I think he's still back there.
Carl is actually here, so if you have any questions, we can...
Carl's the guy that runs the shop out there. And one of the things we are looking at is with, after, after negotiations coming up, that potentially adding a person out there as an equipment operator to help. We're getting a lot of material in, the new Canton contracts, bringing in a lot of material. And we've been struggling with them a little bit in the case of Carl has, sends me pictures every once in a while about how much trash comes in their yard waste. But so far, they've been a little bit, somewhat helpful, I guess I'll say, because it's still, it's still his time that he winds up having to use to do it. And he's only has so much time in a day and then in a week to be able to do that stuff, so.
Thanks for Cam.
Couldn't be doing other things, yes.
When it's, Carl, biodegradable drop-off, not in township, that's Cam?
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
On the bud, on the line item. It's here, that line item?
It's on page 153.
And that would be inclusive also of our landscapers that come in, Superior Township, Ypsilanti City, Van Buren. We still get residents from there to bring their yard waste in. That's all in tuned into that.
So, because 2016 actually was $60,000, and we're at $78,000?
Yes, yes.
Projection for Canton, was it $40,000? I can't remember.
That should be around $114,000. There's an open PO right now for $114,000 per year with the step increases of 2% per year.
Because that's not all in the numbers yet, correct?
No, not yet, and this is a very busy time of the season, so you're going to see a large spike in that, that particular number.
So does...
November's the biggest month.
It's huge.
So since you're waiting on negotiations, is there like, what do you do right now in order to...
Well...
Part-time person in there, or is other staff helping, or...
We've tried to use seasonal help. Again, I'm running the site currently these last five seasons by myself. We've been able to maintain with this larger contract. It is a larger amount of material coming in. And unfortunately, you know, I'm being pulled in different directions. I'm also handling our residents, I'm also handling our customers that we have, you know, basically good rapport with. We blend soils, we do mulches that we've never done before. So I've, I got to admit, I've taken this site particularly from where it was 14 years ago to a, as Joe had said, that it's a enterprise account, we're making money, and that was the whole intent. But with that, I'm one person. I've, to the point now, we need to bring in this other person. It's very crucial that we bring this other person in to give that assistance so that I can handle the incoming yard waste. The mulches have this individual help me process the material coming in and get it into windrows with that new windrow turner, which has turned out to be a godsend. It has produced great compost in probably three months opposed to 11 months that I was doing it with bucket turning with a loader. So that expenditure that we had last year has proven to be great, great. Our lab results just came back for DEQ testing, and we're right up there with the best of them.
So that'll come back and be handled. It's in, on page 148 in the expenditures, is a request that we add a position of operator out there.
What I didn't understand is why do you, why are we waiting, you have to wait to negotiate? My only concern is if you need them now, and it might take forever to negotiate, I have no idea.
There is a couple pushes on this, and this is the reason, unfortunately, I do clean up pretty well. I, I came from work to here, I do clean up okay, so I apologize for my, my work attire. But the push I came tonight is to push for this particular position. I don't want to hit the ground running with a new hire when the season is at its all-time high. That would be not a good thing.
And that's now?
Most people don't operate the equipment. If you're an equipment operator, you don't run a screen plant, you don't jump into a half a million dollar turner. Even our tub grinder, those are things that normal operators don't get to do.
And that's now, Carl, that's what you're saying. Right now, it's your high season.
Well, right now, yes, this is a very busy one.
Spring is a good time to hire?
Will decrescendo right after Christmas, but with the amount of yard waste and the amount of turning, like I said, we've taken this site up to a very opitable site that we need the help. And then plus, we tear down equipment in winter and get the stings ready to go come spring. But my biggest point is, most people don't operate this equipment. I want to get them in early enough so I can train them, get them up on, you know, on board with what equipment we're going to be using.
Is that a question? On that, this has nothing to do with the budget, this has to do with, because we were talking about possibility extending the leaf pickup if, but it looks like the cold weather's coming, we may not have to. But I didn't know, like, do you have more than enough leaves over there right now?
We, we...
So you're not short leaves?
Well, no, actually, we are, we actually are short leaves. So I mean, because this whole process requires a three-to-one mixture ratio. So we got plenty of grass, I stockpile leaves every season. So when the spring comes, I can go ahead and combingle those leaves into what the grass to make basically what the windrows that we ultimately make our compost with. So we are anticipating some leaves to come in, they're slow, they're slow right now. The couple frosts that we had are very helpful for me. I mean, you can't see a guy like me hoping for cold weather because the high winds, the cold weather, some rain, they'll pull them leaves off the tree. And today was the big day, we had probably nine truckloads from Canton come in. Our truck came in with two from the township, and then the residents are just bringing them in like crazy. So we are getting leaves, but we're just a little shy on that. So I guess that question would be, I'm actually game for that extra week, but I look at availability on our pads. We've got two pads, about two acres, two and a half acres on each pad. DEQ standards are 5,000 cubic yards per acre. We are right at that point that I got to balance this out because we're looking at a third pad that I'm trying to construct while I'm doing my daily job. So I need the leaves, no doubt. But I'm thinking maybe with the current weather that we're having, we may just get those in the timely fashion that we want. We're just a little late this year, it's just a little late.
Because you have to know by when, Jeff, to make the decision.
Probably this time next week.
So maybe, so a week from now, we'll know how much you got and whether, whether we, plus the residents, because they're, whether they'd be calling saying, oh, can you go another?
Well, we also have Canton as well.
That's a slippery slope to go down.
It is, it is.
The weather is always, it's just like the chipping thing. We got so many calls because of the, you know, because it was so nice, and so people just kept cutting their trees.
And I see them coming to the compost site.
It's kind of confusing though, I think to residents, I think it would be easier, but I know y'all talking about for next year, they had the date the same for both of them, but maybe that doesn't work for operation, maybe you need the chipping guy, I don't know, so I need to just shut up.
Well, just a, just a special note too, when Jeff asked me about the extra week, I didn't let him know because I was trying to figure out exactly how we're going to pull this off. But Canton did email me in regards to asking us if we want to extend our season because they're getting calls from their residents as well.
There's green leaves still up there.
There's still green trees up there, and, you know, we haven't got the big deep frost like we had just a couple of days, and we're going to get a whopper tonight, so. Again, they have to get with their carrier also logistically to have them come in, which is GFL. I understand that we got to get with waste management, so there's going to have to be a decision made whether we stay open a week, and I got to get with the staff there to cover the gate for that week, and...
Yeah, it's...
So it, it's...
Very complicated. One time we did it, it was, the people who were angry are the ones who didn't know we extended it.
Exactly, exactly.
So you have to do a mailing to everyone, you know, it's...
Because you already told everybody else, it's a bad end.
So they didn't rake, they didn't rake their leaves, and then their neighbor who did rake them because he saw the website or something, got them all picked up, and now they're sitting there looking at it, and they go, no one told you.
Then we have to go back out again, I mean, it...
And I'm concerned too, if we pull the trigger on a Canton, the gate will be open, and you can see the trickle-down effect or the domino effect, that our residents are not getting that full service with our truck, but Canton is allowed to come in. So I'm, I'm in a balancing act to see which way you want to run with extending it out a week or not. I'm with you, I'd probably pass on that one, so.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
All right, and so this, this last page I have here is the net position because this is an enterprise fund. If you just take a look, it's, the bottom line is the net position, they are doing a great job. This is like a fund balance for them, that bottom line. It is a little bit different, but the bottom line is, is how they're doing, so. Any questions on that? One left, nuisance abatement. A very, a very simple one. We have no personnel in this one. In this one, we do have Michael Rasek is here. But this basically is just for what we have when we go around and we have tickets for lighting or we need to board up something for one of the residents, or we need to cut their grass, and we bill them for that, and then they pay us back. If they don't pay us back, then they have to go into, we put them on their tax rolls. So it's kind of a simple, it's not to make money, it's just a reimbursement type of thing. We, we do a service, they are supposed to pay for it.
Thank you, guys.
And then it goes on the tax rolls if they don't. So it's, it's, it's pretty simple. It's got 38,619 fund balance by the end of '18. So it's really not a money-making account. Again, it's just a reimbursement type of thing. Anybody have any questions on that? Thank you, that's the end of my presentation for today.
Thank you, Joe, very much.
You're welcome.
And of course, we're available anytime, if anyone has any questions to go over, anything in the budget.
Yeah, anything current or what we've gone over, or... I have, I have some more funds to go on the 21st, I think we have three or four more to go. We're done.
The court, Green Oaks.
And Recreation in Park.
Yep.
So there's four, you're welcome.
I do.